Meeting of the Westford Select Board. We're very glad you could join us. We're going to start off today with a special guest leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Terry Stater, former head veteran services here at Westford.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is open forum, and we should start off by inviting everybody. Make sure that town meeting is on your calendar because what, one week and six days from now we'll be together for annual, or not for annual town meeting, special time meeting.
Yes, October 27th, 7:00 PM, Westford Academy. Check-in starts at 6:00 PM. All the materials are being uploaded to the website as we speak, and residents should be receiving a postcard in the mail by Friday or Saturday of this week with the 13 articles that are on the warrant. And we'll be talking about those further along in the agenda when the board continues their recommendations.
Great, I think you've got a few other things for us.
Yes, first, I wanted to welcome Nathan Gilmet, our new IT director, who started today, so he's had a very long day. I didn't know if you wanted him to say a few words and if the board could introduce themselves as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. Why don't we go first?
Just a quick seat.
So I'm Tom, we said hi before, but I'm Tom Clay, currently Select Board Chair.
Chris Barrett, currently Vice Chair.
John Cunningham, current lead clerk.
Noel Donovan.
And Sean Kelly, not chair already.
A member. Holding the rest of us up. And yeah, if you'd please just say a few words about your background, we're very happy to have you here.
Sure, so as alluded, my name's Nathan Gilmet. My prior experience, I came from the town of Draken. I was the IT director there for the past nine years. There, I was directly responsible for budgeting procurement, short-term, long-term strategy, as well as the physical hands-on infrastructure for the servers, the networking, the access control, the phone systems, et cetera. Beyond my professional experience, I am a Westford resident. My wife and I moved here five years ago. We were looking for the best education for my daughter, who at the time was one. I'm happy to say she just started at NAB this year, so we're very excited to have that happening. I also now have a 15-month-old son as well, so I'll have two kids coming up through the school systems, and I'm very excited to be here and, you know, have a direct impact on their education, both through technology and through empowering the educators. So I'm real excited to be here.
Yeah, well, thank you. Congratulations to us, I guess, for having you here. And I'm glad that your daughter's having a good start at NAB.
Yes, thank you.
We're all, a bunch of us are NAB parents.
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, thank you, and I think we've agreed to let you go, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone. No one, Tony, need to stay. Okay.
Get to home early.
Thank you. See ya.
Thank you. All right, next, we did talk about this at your last meeting, but I just want to remind members of the public that the town of Westford and Rodenbush are partnering for the Monster Mash event, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, at the Rodenbush Community Center, the Town Hall, with a trunk-or-treat and many food trucks, crafts, games, and family-friendly activities. So if you haven't already seen that, there's additional information being rolled out, so it should be a fun event for the community that weekend before Halloween. And then finally, just wanted to review with the board and members of the public our traditional holiday office hour closings related to Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. So we're planning to close the town buildings at noon on Wednesday, November 26th, in advance of Thanksgiving, and we have our traditional holidays for Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, which is Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. For the Christmas holiday, we'd be closing at 12:00 PM on Wednesday, December 24th, and close for Christmas Day, December 25th. We would reopen on Friday at 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then New Year's, we've closed at noon on Wednesday, December 31st, and close New Year's Day, January 1st, and we open again at 8:00 AM on Friday, January 2nd.
Thank you very much. Other items for open forum from the board?
One thing.
Yeah?
This upcoming Saturday, there's an event at the Town Common at the Bandstand from 11:00 to 1:00 to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, and if it is raining, which it's not supposed to, it will be at the First Parish Church.
Very good. We hope to see some of you there. Anything else from the board? Anything else from the public? Our next time's a public hearing, so we actually can't start until exactly 7:07. Maybe what I'll do is just take the opportunity to mention that we're having what's called a tri-board meeting. So this is all, this is School Committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee. They're going to be meeting in our next meeting, so that's the 28th. We're going to be meeting at Millennium over by the Abbott School. What the tri-board is doing is sort of kicking off the budgeting process. So the budget process is, if you knew this day when working in the town of Westford, that's kicking off. It's actually been going for quite a while, but we're beginning to get to the point where we're ready to highlight the things that look like they're going to be pressure points in this year's budget, beginning to close, get further into the process. And so we invite members of the public to get engaged, to make sure your voice is heard because we, every year, but this year also, we have tough trade-offs to consider. So we hope that you'll be able to come. I'm actually going to send a note out to our committees and see if it's possible that someone from each committee could join us for at least part of the budget process. The tri-board meeting is sort of going to kick off the public part of it, but then there'll be a number of meetings. Both School Committee and Select Board will hear budgets be presented early December. And then the Finance Committee meets through the month of January and February. That's really where you can be in like a line item review, like the very diligent Finance Committee will go through and look at every single line in the budget, ask questions, make recommendations. So it's an opportunity to see how carefully the budget is considered and also weigh in on any decisions. Each of those meetings has a public forum, so if you've got an issue or got a question for what's going to be discussed that night, you can bring it up at the top and make sure that we know you're there and understand what your concerns are.
There is one comment from the public.
Oh, great.
Diane would thank you for reminding us that on Thursday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM is the League of Women Voters Town Meeting Preview. It is via Zoom. We just put out a reminder news flash this evening, so please register via Zoom if you'd like more of in-depth conversation about the 13 articles that are on the town meeting warrant, only four of them which are zoning.
That's enough.
Yes.
Yeah, they're playing, that's a great event, so I recommend anybody who's going to be at town meeting, it's great to get that running start at all the content that we're going to be covering there. So thank you, Diane.
Since we brought up the League of Women Voters, I'm just going to put a plug in for their weekly newsletter. It is a phenomenal way to get a very succinct list of what's going on in the town, purpose of Select Board, Planning Board, anything else from a politic perspective that the League is involved in. But I would highly recommend folks out there sign up for that because it's really great digest to get on a weekly basis about what's happening in the community.
And probably easy to do, you can just go to their homepage and click on.
You don't have to be a member of the League to receive it.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Okay, we are now at 7:07. Anything else that we want to make sure we cover? Okay. Then we'll move to our 7:07 item, and I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Tom? It's all in there somewhere. Okay. We are ready to hear from our friends at National Grid.
So I just promoted David Boucher. He should be joining in a moment, and I also promoted Kyle Fox, our DPW director, in case there is any questions for him. And Lori Halberstern, our Assistant DPW Director, is also in the room.
Okay, well, welcome, Dave. If you can hear us, maybe you could just give us a quick outline of what's being proposed here.
Hi, David Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Endover. I'm not sure why my video isn't showing up. I don't see my, you probably can't see me, you're just looking at my name, but I'll speak and say what I have to. I'm here tonight for a poll petition. The town has a culvert project on North, I'm sorry, North Main Street, yes. And we've proposed to relocate the existing pole, 47, approximately 20 feet, to the northeast, and that would be a new permanent spot for pole 47 and enable the town to go forward with the project that they have, to work on the culvert.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Thanks, Kyle, for sending your note in our packet. In your note, I think, Kyle, you said that you support going ahead with this and don't have any concerns. Okay, that is what his memo said. So hopefully Kyle's in agreement. Any questions from the board?
Did we have a correspondence? Somebody said they removed the pole and it's going to be in the middle of their driveway or close to their driveway? I meant to go by there and I forgot to do that.
I don't think there's any driveways in that area where the pole, the new pole's going to be located.
Yeah.
It's kind of a grassy area and it drops off.
I think that was a previous resident from a different?
No, there's a list of correspondence in here, and my take is that they did furnish her with the picture. There wasn't any further correspondence. I wasn't sure if she was satisfied with that or not, but it sounds like we're good.
All right.
Okay. Any questions from the public?
I don't see anything online.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve the permission to locate the poles, wires, and fixtures as described in our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Sean?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, and now we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you very much, Dave, and thank you, Kyle.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good night.
You too.
I know we'll be hearing from Kyle in a second, so don't go far, Kyle. Next up is our 710 item, which is a request for a change of manager of Mass. General Law 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Beverages Club License at the Frederick Astley American Legion Post 159, located 2 Cross Street. Proposed new manager is M. Scott Rogers, and Terry is here from the acting as clerk at the American Legion Post. So Terry, why don't you come forward? First, a question, everything's in order for the proposed manager change?
Yes, the clerk has signed off on them.
Okay. Great. Any questions for Terry about this change?
No, it's like in order.
Okay. Sounds like, any questions from public? Concerns from public? Okay. I don't see anybody on the line.
I don't see anything on Zoom.
With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change of managers described in our agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Next up is a discussion about the Public Works winter maintenance policy and Select Board mailbox policy. So welcome, Lori and Kyle. So thank you for the memos that were in our packet. Maybe just for the benefit of the public, either Kyle or Lori, if you'd just like to describe, I guess we've not had a winter maintenance policy before. Why is now the right time to add one and sort of a general idea of what's included, and then also discuss the mailbox policy?
Thank you for having me here tonight. I am here to present a proposed winter maintenance policy and updates to the existing mailbox right-of-way and installation policy for consideration. It's important to have a winter maintenance policy in place to serve as a record that the town follows consistent and responsible approach to maintaining safe public ways during the winter. Having a policy in place also promotes operational consistency, accountability, and documentation that can assist in defending against claims or litigation that relate to snow and ice conditions. So what's included in the policy? I'll just briefly go through for the residents. Purpose and intent, this establishes efficient, environmentally responsible, and effective procedures for snow and ice control. The objective is to maintain reasonably safe travel conditions for the public and emergency services, also minimizing economic disruptions and protect town infrastructure and the environment. On the procedure, each storm brings unique challenges, and it's our response to those challenges that make the procedures. So in this section, it touches briefly on weather services that we use, how we address staffing, appropriate use of chemicals, and when we initiate plowing and sidewalk clearance. The procedures are covered more in depth in our procedure manual, and this is a live document that includes all staffing lists, equipment, other details about when we should apply chemicals, and these will determine the decisions that we make during the storm events. Command, all winter maintenance activities fall into the direction of the Public Works Director. And execution, this clarifies that we will follow the policy unless there is an extenuating circumstance that occurs, such as it's snowing an inch or more an hour, we get flash freeze, or half the crew comes down with a fluke. Mailboxes, occasionally mailboxes are damaged, and this refers residents to the mailbox policy that we'll be going over next. And then damage to private property, this section explains the town's responsibility if damage should occur during winter operations. So that's the policy in brief. Looking for some feedback for the proposed policy and to help ensure that the winter maintenance operations align with the Select Board's anticipated level of service.
That's great. Thanks, Lori. And so this policy will help make sure that the service level being provided is applied consistently and fairly, which is obviously of great merit. Any questions from the board about the Public Works winter maintenance policy? Chris?
Great policy. Love to see that you have sidewalks in here. Where will this policy live for, so that if the public wanted to reference it, they could find it?
It should be living on the website underneath the Select Board policies.
It's not going to be under the DPW, so that's just another website.
Oh, it can be there as well?
I don't know. I don't know if we have any policies already in place or where we, I know the Select Board has.
The Select Board has policies that we store on our website. I think the intent is for the Select Board to sign this policy and for it to be your policy so it'll live there. We could also have it cross-referenced in the DPW website as well.
Right.
Kyle, are you okay with that? I'm promising something without asking the director.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what I anticipated. Thank you.
Okay, so I would think that if members of the public had questions, they would probably go to your website first, Kyle, rather than the Select Board Policy Sub-Annex.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Good. Other questions or feedback on the winter maintenance policy? I also thought it was very simple, very clear, so I think anyone who's curious can quickly get a sense of how we make decisions, so that's great. Okay. Any questions from the public about the winter maintenance policy?
No.
And Kyle, you're looking for a vote tonight. This is our policy, so is this like a listening hearing period for subsequent approval, or are we thinking that tonight it's all?
Well, I got a question on the mailbox policy.
Okay, why don't we do the winter maintenance policy for, so you are looking for a vote to adopt?
If the board is comfortable. Hopefully, we don't have snow in the next few weeks if you need to hold this till October 28th.
Is the board comfortable proceeding with the winter maintenance policy? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the winter maintenance policy as described in our board materials.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, let's, anything more, Lori, you'd like to say about the mailbox policy before we go to questions?
So really, it was just adopted originally in January 27th of 2000. Need a little updating. Truly, it just, it just updates very few things. The U.S. Postal Service installation guidelines are called out, and also the Mass. General Law about unauthorized encroachment. But really, the installation is the same. It's just the mailbox replacement due to snow removal operations. Again, that section was updated. We don't intentionally hit mailboxes, but if it does happen, we will repair them under certain conditions and with standard materials, and that's all listed out in the policy now.
Okay. And so there, aside from housekeeping, are there any substantial changes in the way the policy's been?
No.
Okay. Great. John, I know you had a question before.
Yeah, I know she carved out an exception for repair or replacing the mailbox, mailboxes with spike-type supports or non-standard installations. Could you describe that and then answer the question is, if you destroy a mailbox, you destroy a mailbox. If you hit it, whether it's properly installed or not, and knock it down, then I would think that would not be an exception. I mean, and actually, if the snow got it and it wasn't properly installed, I could see that exception, but could you describe that, what spike-type supports or non-standard installations, and also the other question?
Okay. Yeah, Kyle, can you, do you want to speak to those, or Lori?
Yeah, you want me to jump in on that? So yeah, John, I think what we're trying to focus there is, obviously, there's a lot of mailboxes on a lot of roads, and we certainly don't have the capacity to check each and every one. So, you know, most mailboxes, if properly situated, which is 6 to 12 inches behind the curb or, you know, in non-curbed areas, that seems 6 to 12 inches away from the edge of pavement. We should never hit the mailboxes, but oftentimes residents will cheat the mailboxes closer to the road because it means less shoveling for them to have access to their mailbox. And so it's those kind of things that, you know, if they're not properly located or if they're on a shorter pole, if the mailbox is set at a height that meets the post office requirements, our wing plows will actually fit right underneath them and won't hit them. But if a box is shorter than it's supposed to be, then it's possible our wing plow could clip it. So those are the kind of instances that we're talking about. And I would say, you know, in general, we're not out there afterwards with tape measures and arguing these things. Typically, you know, we take a resident-centric approach to our response to winter mailbox hits.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board about the mailbox policy? Okay, we have a question from the public?
So Kristina Green just asked about the winter maintenance policy. Does the winter maintenance policy impact the budget? And my understanding is that it's just codifying what you're currently doing today and it would not impact the budget, but I want just Kyle and Lori to confirm that.
Yep, that's correct, Kristin. I will say budget-wise, one thing it could have a positive impact for is by having a winter maintenance policy, we're offered certain additional municipal immunity to actions we take. So it could actually save us in a liability standpoint from legal action.
Okay, thanks, Kristina. Great question. So this isn't changing the standard of practice, it's basically just codifying?
Correct.
Okay, super.
Just another question.
Sure.
She also asked, sidewalks are new, how can it not impact the budget? We were told at Capital that it would be impacted over time.
Yeah, Kyle, is what spelled out here going to be a net cost up in terms of sidewalk plow?
So I think that largely depends on what happens going forward. We put the sidewalks in knowing what we know today and that that's where, hoping to be able to maintain some sidewalks versus the contracted option we've had in the past. And that decision will be made next Monday night. But either way, it would have a budget savings in general for us to take over the winter maintenance of the sidewalks. And I had sent a memo to Kristin and Dan, which I think I forwarded to FinCom, kind of showing a 10- and 20-year look ahead of the contracted option, which we currently do, at about $40,000 a year versus an in-house option, which obviously it's expensive in year one because we would have to buy the equipment, but over 10 years, even with the overtime factored in, it would be cheaper for us to take on the maintenance ourselves. And we'd get added benefits of doing more than the 3.8 miles of sidewalk that are in the contracted program, and we'd have use of the trackless year-round to perform summer tasks as well.
Okay, so from an operating cost, we'd expect our direct cost to be less than the contract, and we put the capital in and look at over 10 years, it's still there?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
So if the board is comfortable on updating the mailbox policy, we'd be happy to do that. I think we just need to change the title that says Department Policy. We'd just change that to Select Board Policy, but if you're comfortable updating that as well from the 2000 version, we can vote on that or if you'd like to hold it for a future meeting for more review.
Are we comfortable moving ahead? Okay.
There you go.
So I don't see any other public comments, so we'll now entertain a motion to approve the Select Board mailbox policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Kyle. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here. Next up is a joint meeting with the Economic Development Committee for a check-in and progress report. So Imran, if you'd like to call the Economic Development Committee into session.
Call to order.
Okay, excellent. And I think you have a quorum from the folks here. Is anyone joining online, Kristina?
No, no. Economic Development.
So yeah, Imran, if you'd like, come on up.
Let me bring your slides up.
Also being joined by Joe Ginowitz, our Town Planner.
Good evening, everybody. I thank you, all of you, to give me the opportunity today to speak and present about a very, very important topic, which is intentional and appropriate economic growth for our town, the town of Westford. So before I get into it, I'd like to explain how I want to proceed today. First few minutes, I will explain how EDC works, and then afterwards, we will gradually get into the strategy we use, and then finally, the line item for the budget, which is going to be our ask that EDC be provided with some funding. My name is Imran Hatnawaz. I moved in this area about 16 years ago from South Shore. So it has been a very pleasant experience thus far. My kids go to the local schools, and I also volunteer for school advisory committee for Miller School. This economic committee was formed in 2012, and the primary reason to form this committee was so it could advise the Select Board on the policies so we can have a very, very strong economy. We also see commercial growth, and we make sure that we preserve the heritage of this town. And that is a very, very important aspect. Committee gets the members in three different ways. The members like myself and Bruce, which is sitting right behind me, and then we get the huge assistance from the town, Tom Clay, Kristin, Jeff, and Joe. They're always there to support us. And then recently, we had started getting a lot of support from the advisory services provided by Trost Consulting Services. So we understand that we are a very unique town. The residents of this town, they love the heritage we have. We love the open spaces we have. We are really, really proud of our school system, one of the reasons for me to be here. And we also want to make sure that our neighborhood, which is very tightly knit, it stays the same. So what Economic Development Committee does, it understands this whole idea. An economic committee proposes the plans, making sure that the growth is not for the sake of growth only. We are also preserving the heritage of the town, and we are coming with a very calculated and balanced approach, which is beneficial for the residents of the town and the businesses. And how the committee does that? On one side, the committee is consistently working with the Select Board and advise them on different policies, just like we talk about the policies about zoning, permitting. We also want to make sure that we are able to identify the economic trends in the area. So when we talk about these two aspects, then we are now gradually expanding. One side, we are working with the businesses, existing businesses and the potential businesses, where we are always trying to make sure that existing businesses feel that they are being hurt and the life is made easy for them. For example, permitting process is there, or the zoning bylaws. Second thing, we want to invite the businesses from outside the community to come here. We want to make our town to be very profitable and lucrative for them to come here. To do that, we work as a liaison between To do that, we work as a liaison between the town of Westward and some other organizations, for example, Chambers, like Commerce, or M3, which is the Middlesex Three Communities. And if you are not aware, I can very quickly expand on it, starting from Tingsborough, Groton, Littleton, all the way to Reuben, Winchester, these communities. So we work with them. At the same time, we also work with NIMCOG. This is the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. So why do we do that? Few options, a few reasons. Number one, Economic Committee wants to make sure that we are able to identify the economic trend, so we want to be able to, aware of what's happening in the surroundings. At the same time, we want to be aware of the competition we have. And this particular point, I will come back later, that why do we feel that we have a competition, and why do we want to compete against them? So this is how we work. So I just briefly talked about some of the policies where the Economic Development Committee helps. So if we just simply go to the next slide, please. So I talked about a few things. We support zoning and land use changes. We assist the town, the Select Board, with the creation of ETA. If there is a policy, we like to provide guidance on that. And the very, very important aspects which we are talking about is the role in the marketing and the Community Guide. I already talked about the regional partners we have, like Chambers, Middlesex Three Communities, and NIMCOG. Very important thing, which we have been doing recently, is that the events we are holding and the focus groups we are creating, because we want to understand how the businesses in the town see the town of Westward, how do they perceive us, and what challenges they are facing. And when we gather that information, that data, we bring it back to the Select Board. Ribbon cutting. Last week, three or four days ago, we were there at Thrive Esthetics, which had their opening, soft opening in Westward. Last week, I was also part of Roadtree, they invited me to speak, so I introduced them to Economic Development Committee. Also, there's a networking group, Westward Business Association. So myself and another member of the EDC, we have been going to their monthly meetings and their special meetings on a regular basis, because we are trying our best so we can connect with the businesses, and we understand what their needs are, and we always invite them. So when we are hosting any events, we want them to come, we want them to provide the feedback, and any difficulties they feel, or they have ideas, we bring them back. So if we go to the next slide. This is a very important aspect. By bringing TROST Advisory Services into the mix, this was the ARPA investment, and we started working on Discover Westward brand. And I'm assuming that most of the people already understand the picture at the bottom left, these are the apples. And we are from the apple orchard country. So we just wanted to make sure that we understand the character of this town, and that's exactly the whole idea. We have been getting a lot of assistance from TROST Advisory, and the work which is listed here, very important thing is the Small Business Toolkit. And what we are doing, we are trying to make sure that we have a very solid refined database, which is going to be available, and we are going to establish a primary contact. So people who want to open businesses, they want to have any questions, or they want to get information, they have a dedicated contact. And then there's going to be a partnership, and the partnership, which is gradually going to be, it's an evolution. So it will start, and it will gradually get bigger. So next slide, please. And this is the branding we talk about. We want to brand our town. So the businesses, large-scale businesses, manufacturing, retail businesses, they understand that Westward is a very business-friendly community, and businesses love two things. One, they want everything to be easy for them, and two, they want it to be profitable. And we have those two tools. We can provide that answer to the questions they always have. If we are able to work on our Discover Westward and the branding, the way we are presenting, we are very confident that within next few years, two years or so, we will be able to see a lot of return to the investment we are going to put in this direction. Next, please. So here's what I want to explain. For the fiscal year 2023, if you see the activities by Economic Development Committee, they were almost doubled in fiscal year 2025, and the big reason was that we had the assistance from the advisory service. And we have a vision that if we are able to get the same type of assistance, then we will be able to see like almost four times of the activities and four X returns as well, or maybe more. But we don't know any number yet, so I am actually gonna knock through a number saying that how much the return is gonna be. But we have seen in the communities that some of the competitors, which I like to say competitors, like the town of Billerica, Concord, Lexington, Burlington, they have the dedicated positions which are working on these aspects in their towns. We do not have that. Next slide, please. Marketing and promotion. From fiscal year 2025, if we see, we had one outreach event. If I go further, sorry, 2003, 23, so we had one event. In 2024, on June 7th, we had another event, which was at NetScout, and I am assuming that was the Westward Business Forum. And this year, we have done two events. But see, what else have we done? Discover Westward brand promotion, then developed web presence, that the page was built. Do we have the link to that page? Can we throw it?
We can show it at the end of the presentation.
Okay, all right. Then the Small Business Toolkit. And then the comparison, if we see, which is about the coordination and collaboration, if you see two years ago, that was non-existent, now we have initiated it. And our ask is, if we are funded, that we are going to very actively engage all the business community, and that's our goal. So next slide, please. So these are three options which we talk about. And the first option, which is about $33,600, that is gonna be just very basic maintenance, but it is not going to help us to bring, to put focus on more businesses or engage them, because this is just the maintenance of existing infrastructure which is already there. If we go for the second option, which is build and compete, that is where we see the value, because now we are going to provide a lot of services to the business community, which will be coming in the later slide. And then there is another option, which is if we really, really want to go aggressive, and we want to bring businesses in this area, and then we can just simply come up with the higher allocation of the budget, which is $107,400, and that will actually give us a jumpstart. We will be like literally in the high gears. So our idea at this point, if you go to the next slide, and why do we want to do this? The whole idea, we want to maintain the brand awareness, that's a very basic thing. But at the same time, we want to be very, very proactive. We want to make sure that our webpage is refreshed quarterly, it has all the relevant information, and the content which we have is current. We do not want to be having any information from the events which were done in 2016. At the same time, we want to have better outreach. We should be able to work with the community and the businesses. And for that, we want to do more than one event a year. And at the same time, instead of us sitting there and waiting for the business approach, we want to be proactive, and we want to approach the businesses and bring them to our town. So the partnerships which we are talking about, this is where we see a lot of expense, that's the biggest chunk of money, but we also believe that this is going to give us the return. And if we go to the next slide, one more, please. I guess another one, here. Now, this is very important, and I will request very, like, brief, quick attention, and this is our situation right now. Just imagine the commercial offices space we have, the retail space we have, we have industrial and manufacturing space, multifamily. And if you remember, we are going to have more multifamily housing coming to our town. Tech Park on 110, Powers Road, and few other things, maybe Regency as well. All these people who will be living, they will be needing more businesses to fulfill their needs, and if our town is not going to provide, they will be going elsewhere. And this is where I said I will come back to that competition part. If we are not working proactively, bringing the businesses to our town, then other towns are already either ahead of them, or they have devised some planning strategy already. We will be losing those potential businesses to those towns, and in return, we will be losing some of the revenue to them. And we very strictly believe that when we are going to invest that budget-wide item which we are talking about, it will have way more return than the total amount we are going to spend. So our returns to our investment certainly are going to cover the cost, and maybe way more than that. At the same time, we want to explain to the Select Board that we understand the budget cuts, we also understand that there is one bucket of the budget. So if there is some allocation of the funds, that will be coming from different areas from the same bucket. So we want to explain that all three components of EDC, the volunteer members, and the individuals coming from the town, and the advisory services, we are extremely committed that we will make sure that we keep working the way we are working right now, and the way we have been working. And I can explain the amount of work we have put, especially after the TROST Advisory Services came, that work has been phenomenal. We have seen a lot of traction, and we have seen a lot of work being done in a very fast pace. The focus groups we had worked with, the results were good, and the data which we started working on, the refinement of the data, that has been very fast. So if you go to the next...
So I'm a little out of order now, so I'm gonna go back to where we were.
I can go to the last one, actually.
This is the last one.
This is the... So this is the timeline. Our recommendation is that we consider allocating budget. We had about, in the last two weeks, we had two meetings on this budget line item. A lot of the items which we had in the really high category, which required more expenses, we discussed them and we moved them into the mid-category. So initially, we would be paying way more for those services, which we are actually going to pay a little less than that. So we believe that this $72,900 should be the minimum, and ideally, we will prefer $107,400 allocated, but we understand the limitations, so that's gonna be up for discussion when the time comes, but these are the recommendations that EDC makes. So I guess that's pretty much it from my perspective. We just want to make sure that, we want to have that vibrant community, and that is not gonna be possible without economic growth. And here is Route 2, here is Route 3, here is 495 Corridor, the development is inevitable. Sooner or later, that's gonna happen, but if it happens quickly, we'll be able to capture the bigger chunk. And if we delay, then we will have to find the alternate ways. So that's pretty much it from me.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Imran. And thank you, Bruce, thank everybody, and it's been a very, thank you to the TROST folks, it's been a very hard-working committee, and it's been a lot of fun to be a part of that. What are the questions that we have for Imran? Yep, Sean?
Thanks for the presentation, Imran. Fantastic. So I guess my first question is, how much is the Economic Development Committee currently receiving in the form of, is it ARPA funds right now?
That's it. And that came only this year, prior to that, there was nothing.
Okay, how much money is that now?
So it was $95,000 for 18 months, is my understanding?
Correct.
Okay, and that will run up?
December of 2025.
December, yeah.
So there will be a gap if the board decides to support, or I can fit it in the budget for fiscal '27, there will be a six-month gap regardless.
Okay. And can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. And of that amount, what's going to, you have it kind of broken into three categories, advertising memberships, and then consultant services?
That's right.
So what's the spread of that in the current iteration? Is it all going to consultant, or?
So this slide breaks down the costs related to advertisement. Some of the costs will be allocated towards the events and focus groups and membership, and the remaining costs, as you see, like, is going to consulting services.
Okay, so the ARPA money that we're doing right now is...
Is all consultant services.
It's all consultant services now?
Yeah.
Okay. So the idea is going forward, we'll be able to offer these, focus on memberships and advertising, things that we're not doing currently?
Yes.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Or we can just simply look at the apples, and then we can see the difference.
I'm a visual guy, so that's very helpful.
That's a good question, Sean. So it sounds like it's roughly level spending on the consultant services, instead of 95 for 18, it's 63 covering 12. So it'd be sort of about the same level of support we've been getting now. Okay. Chris, do you have a question?
You answer it. My question was, was this for an 18-month or a 12-month engagement? It sounds like this is a 12-month.
Right, it would match up with the budget.
Yes, okay.
Yep, John?
What specific consultant services would that money pay for?
I'll defer to that.
So...
If you'd like to come on up to the microphone.
And also, it's also demonstrated on several slides that I'll keep up here as well.
Yeah, so these two slides kind of break down...
Jack, can you, Mike, can you just introduce yourself?
Jack Tross from TROST Advisory Services. So these two slides pretty much break down the scope of the work into the four areas, the attraction and retention strategies, that's really reaching out to the existing businesses and to prospective businesses. The strategic planning and research is really getting into the information, the data, looking at trends, and working with these regional partnership groups, which help provide some of the resources. If you go to the next slide, Kristin, the marketing and promotion. We talked about the Discover Westward site, I hope you all had an opportunity to visit it. The key activity there is to try to keep the site current. My colleague Marilyn Boone is here with me, and we've been working with the committee to set up that site, but really to keep it fresh, put new businesses up, telling the success stories in Westward. The Small Business Toolkit guide, Imran mentioned, historically, in 2014, there was the Community Guide, which had an Economic Development section. That guide is the old-style, you know, shelf life ran out. Now, you know, everything we can do electronically, provide those resources, so the toolkit. We also have a guide, which is a separate document that's more like the Community Guide, but it's focused on business. And then in terms of coordination and collaboration, this is where I think it's really important, there's a lot of technology that's possible that we can combine with this database that we've created of about 700 businesses, to interface with both the permitting activities of the town, the activities of the town clerk, which is a direct contact into the business community, and then what I would call the inbound interest, which is about 175 to 200 businesses that are interested in communicating, and kind of pull those pieces together. So that's what we talk about when we talk about coordination, collaboration, in terms of the internal potential resources.
Yeah, have you had any contact with prospective industries or businesses to come into the town? And if you've had, what's that been like? What are they? And if you've had, what's that been like? What are they, what are they asking? Or is there some kind of key element that they're looking for? And.
So depends what kind of business we're talking about. For example, if it's industrial manufacturing, that's gonna be having a different need. And if we are talking about the retail businesses, they will be looking for something else. And for that particular reason, I think that we need the resources to have that dedicated person or the services who can actually not just create that toolkit, but should be able to contact those businesses actively, pursue them, and convince them to come here. But at the moment, we do not have anything like that in place, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And you, you can imagine that it runs a large spectrum. And when you have these tenants in the office buildings, a lot of them are multinational companies. They're really just looking for space and they, and they're looking for the amenities that Westford has to offer. When you're talking about smaller businesses, they may be looking for basic resources on how to help them grow or expand, possibly get financing. So we're trying to, you know, meet both the needs of large businesses and small businesses.
So John, just to add to that, Jack and I have visited property owners who own large properties to discuss the potential tenants that they've been talking to. I've been able to point several potential small business owners to Jack for potential grants or small business loans. So we're starting to see that flywheel churn, but we haven't gotten to full speed yet.
Can I add something?
Yeah, Bruce, if you wanna come on up and. If you could introduce yourself.
Bruce Wasenberg, Vice Chair. So with Milco, a few years ago, they carried out some studies for us. And there were at least two areas with which they said it's a target of opportunity. Green industries, and we are already a quarter of the green community status, and alternative energies. So we just began to reach out to some of them. Covid got in the way. One area to be candid that we cannot really go after would be bio-farm manufacturing. Of course, that's huge water consumers, no sewers here. But we could go after the pointy end of the spear of, of the bio research. And again, a lot of this was just based upon the fact that we have a highly educated community, where we're situated, and so on. So there are some targeted industries.
Any other questions? Yeah, Chris?
I have a couple. So you mentioned a point of contact. Who do you see that being? Is that you, somebody else, somebody in town? Like, how does that work?
Consulting services.
Consulting services. So does that kind of lock us in, though? If for some reason, we have a business that we've been working with and then the contract runs out, our point of contact sort of disappears. So from a continuity perspective, do you see that as a risk factor?
It has its pros and cons. I can explain that some of the towns, they have some dedicated people. They might not see that kind of traction of performance analysis because of the accountability maybe. Actually, having a contractor doing, I am assuming, will be having more accountability.
So you would advocate, rather than us trying to fund a full-time economic development coordinator position as a town employee, to continue with a contract approach? And you think that would be a better fit for us?
I mean, it will be having its own ideas. I think that can be, from economic committee's perspective, we just want to make sure that we do not stop the traction which has already started. It keeps going. So if it is coming from the consulting services, the big, big pro is that they have initiated, they already understand, and they have created the toolkit and Discover website, a Westford website. So that will be a little like head start. But if we want to go for a dedicated employee, considering the budget restraints, everything, wherever the select board decides, I think we just want to make sure that it just does not stop.
Understood, yeah.
Jeff, do you have something you wanna say?
Yeah, so I think we've had a lot of conversations, you know, about this. And I think in the short term, we thought adding a full-time staff person would actually be more costly. And, you know, with economic development, it is a bit uncertain. We thought, thought it'd be more responsible to start with consultant services, it would be smaller, see what we'd get for any results, you know, over, you know, a measurable point of time. And then if it made sense to explore a full-time position, we'd consider it then. But we didn't think it would be honestly a good idea to go for it at this point in time until we had more time under our belt with, you know, consultant services at a reduced cost. So that also limits you to presumably be a single individual versus, you know, the consultant team. So we thought, maybe when we get up to speed and get things running the way we want to and we can find some more tangible results, we can make a more informed decision about whether there should be full-time staff, part-time staff. You know, we just thought we need more information before we could recommend something like that.
I appreciate that response. Thank you. And just to segue off a few things you said regarding results. So what I'm not seeing necessarily here in a tangible way is what are our KPIs? What are the metrics that we're gonna use to gauge success? Are we gonna be talking about, you know, X number of new businesses? Are we gonna talk about the available, you know, percentage of business space that we have in the community decreasing as we engage more firms to come here? How do we know that this investment is reaping benefits for the community?
So earlier today, the information you provided, the office space, we have twenty-three percent space which is available at this point. And retail is about one percent, industrial, less than one percent, and multifamily, about four percent available. So the best idea would be to be aggressive and make sure that the office retail and the business space which is available, that's been utilized. And once we utilize that and we are working with the landlords, we are going to create the point of contact, the small business toolkit, our website, making sure that we navigate them through permitting process and all that. So hopefully, that will be bringing more revenue in turn. So that's.
So maybe one of the things we could look at, we do have some information about, say, office vacancy both for our town and our region. It might be to take a look at what is that, you know, percent vacancy over time, not just compared to ourselves, but compared to our neighboring communities. Like, do we gain any ground, even if it's, you know, half a percent or a percent or something? That could be something to, to track. I will admit, it's obviously very difficult to know what can be tied to the dollar spent in this budget. But, you know, it's, I'd say it's, it's the medium-to-long game. You know, you don't know. But if you, if others are trying and you're not, you know, they may get something that you might have, you know, we just don't know. But we think we'll have a lot more information if we're able to continue down this path for a couple of years.
Also see that the data we have is, we don't have a lot of data points at the moment because we just started working on these things very recently. So the more data we are able to build and access, we should be able to have the better understanding if we are actually going further or we are not moving at all.
And I would say in terms of the number of businesses, we can track that in terms of the ones that express an interest. So when we started, I think we had a database of about a hundred and twenty. That database has grown to about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. And that's with a, you know, a limited amount of outreach to try to pull some. You know, one of the proposals in here is to engage in more email marketing, more sophisticated types of outreach from that perspective. I would also say that if you take the commercial and industrial tax base, the budget line item represents less than one percent of the, of the total revenue. So if we were able to expand the commercial-industrial tax base by one percent, it would cover that cost and hopefully, there'd be more incremental growth than that.
No, I think that's an excellent response. And that's the way that I feel, you know, we can sell this to Westford taxpayers, right? If we can explain in some meaningful way that we feel that this investment is going to be paid for, maybe hopefully many times over by increased, you know, businesses coming to the community and that, that's great. I mean, that's, that's the numbers that I'm looking for, so.
There is another aspect to it, too. Sometimes the businesses, they grow. And if they want to grow and they do not feel the existing space is gonna be reasonable for them, they might leave our town. But when we are in the mix, there's a possibility that we can assist them in securing another location. Or maybe, so sometimes these kind of things, you also want to see, like, it's an economic meltdown and everybody else is going to lose ten percent of their base and we are going to lose only six or seven percent just because we are so active. So that's also, we can consider in some of those areas. Thank you.
Yeah, along Chris's line, so in assisting Kristin in presenting this to the, the next round of budget hearings and kind of all the decision-making matrix. I think, kind of along Chris's line, it might help if you had something that was even simpler. Like, our goal is to increase visibility for those who are looking to relocate, you know, boost our retention by clear communication, make it easier for people to come here by streamlining the operations. And maybe just give a couple of examples of the kind of outcomes you're looking for. Like, we're able to find a couple service providers to, to serve our increasing population that meet the needs of the town. And we're able to, you know, keep, keep, keep someone here growing in Westford because we've been able to support them. So I, I know that's, we don't wanna overpromise and get real specific about predicting the future, because that's kind of hard to do. But I think if you can give a couple little examples of the kinds of outcomes you're targeting, I think that would be helpful. Because a lot of people aren't gonna have the grounding that, that obviously you guys have and at this point than we have. So I would, I would, if you could cook it down to like two slides, real simple, what is it we're trying to do? I think that'll, that'll help Kristin making her case. Because at the night we talk about, is this in the, potentially this would be in your budget?
This will be under the land use department's budget line item.
So there'll be a lot of other things in land use that come up that night. Yeah, so you'll have one chance to sort of make the case. So I would just think about how you can kind of hit people with, who aren't part of this process so far.
Yeah.
Any other questions for, we, we'll go to the public in a second. Any other questions from board? Any questions from the public about? About this? We certainly hope that you can participate in kind of the tee-up for what's going on with the budget and then the specific night. The way that the Finance Committee reviews work is they pick a certain section of the, of the budget for each of the twelve meetings or eight meetings, or how many meetings we have. And so there'll be a night when Jeff will be basically presenting all the things in his budget. And that'll be a night that'll be really helpful to you and, and other people from Economic Development will be there.
I'll be there. Yep.
Yeah. Anything from the public?
I don't see anything from the public. I think from the select board, whether it be tonight or in a future meeting, I would like some direction on where you're leaning towards in terms of service. You know, we all have our opinion as either staff or the town manager or the EDC. We know we have competitive, competing interests. We've been talking about what are the schools' needs, what are the finance department's needs, what are our communications' needs, which we'll hear in just a few moments? What are potential pay-as-you-throw needs or, or those types of things? So in terms of prioritization, I'll be looking for some feedback from, from your board as I continue to craft the fiscal twenty-seven budget ask.
Yeah, I think, I think my sense is we probably wanna come back to that in the context of, of the trade-off, probably. The, something else would be interesting, which you guys alluded to, is it would be helpful to know what other towns are doing. Because the other piece of the context besides what our internal trade-offs are is, you know, right along 110, people are deciding do they wanna locate in Chelmsford, Littleton, or Westford. It happens every day. And I think if we throttle back too far, we could run the risk of, okay, well, now we've got extra dollars to do this. But if we're not doing the same outreach, the same communication, the same promotion that our neighbors are, you know, over time, that's gonna lose. So it would be interesting just to get a sense of scale of how other towns are coming at this. Whether they're doing kind of a half-FTE consulting-type program like this, where they've got full-time staff. I think, I think we've seen along 110, lots of different things tried and untried. So what are the state of the?
You know, Chelmsford specifically had to cut their economic development staff person because they were facing severe budget cuts in fiscal twenty-five. Littleton, we see what's going on at the Point as well as the King Street IBM property. I know Jack's been outreaching to Concord and Lexington, Bedford, Burlington. Those are slightly different than Westford, but you see what they are able to produce with those. So we can continue to work on that information and provide that back to the board.
I would keep active in that mix if I were you.
Right, yeah, they have a person as well, yep.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, well, thank you. Thank you everyone who's been here tonight. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay. Next up is an update from Communications Consultant Capital Strategic Solutions.
Can I get a gen?
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, please do. I'm sorry. Jump the gun. Okay. Well done. Thank you. Thanks, Imran. Okay. Communications Consultant, we're gonna be hearing from Nicole and Liz.
Great, so just a reminder to the public and the board, we have had Capital Strategic Solutions onboard as our communications consultant since January of twenty-twenty-five. They were funded through ARPA dollars. And their slides will show specifically, they helped us prepare a communications strategy plan as well as have been providing day-to-day consultancy services for our communications and training to our staff. They're also currently providing services to create our fiscal twenty-four annual reports, as that was cut from the budget a few years ago. So they're here this evening to provide you an update similar to what you just heard from the EDC in terms of update. Their services run through December of twenty-twenty-six. So we still have a little bit of time, but there is an ask at the end to potentially fund additional consultant services from January to June of fiscal twenty-seven. So you will see that at the end. So Liz and Nicole, I'll turn this over to you. And if you need sharing capabilities, please let me know.
All right, Liz, are you going to share your screen? Yes, are you seeing it?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. Next slide, please. So for those who have not had the opportunity to meet us in the general public, my name's Nicole Figurito. I'm the CEO of Capital Strategic Solutions. And joining me today is Liz Calagian. She's been the project manager as well as a project lead for Westford's communications. Next slide, please. We're excited to dive right into our update as we understand that you have a lengthy agenda this evening. And we ask that you please hold your questions until the end because they may be answered during the presentation. During Phase One, we focused on developing the comprehensive communications plan for the town through a structured process that included a baseline, baseline assessment strategy development, multi-channel planning, and evaluation. Each step improved the effectiveness and consistency and alignment of town communications with its goal of excellence in communication. We conducted a full audit of the communications channels, including the websites, social media, print materials, to assist, to assess the reach and impact that it was having with the Westford community. We met with town and school staff, identified strengths, challenges, and opportunities for better coordination, especially during emergencies. I think right out of the gate, we had an incident that we were dealing with, with the both town and school staff. Existing materials, we reviewed existing materials, performance data to pinpoint gaps in areas in which improvements could be made. Using these insights, we established clear communication, communication goals aligned with the town's strategic plan and key performance indicators and developed unified messaging and branding guidelines to ensure consistent voice across all platforms. To support the long-term success, we trained the staff, provided implementation resources such as, you know, documents, how-to documents, established metrics and reporting tools for measuring progress, and sustained alignment with the town's objectives. Phase One deliverables included a comprehensive communication plan, a content calendar, emergency and social media frameworks, and templates for messaging, social media posts, and crisis communications. Given, given the town, providing the town with a clear, actionable roadmap for consistent and effective outreach. We are currently advancing into Phase Two and Phase Three concurrently to build a foundation, to build on the foundation that was established in Phase One. Our focus is twofold, providing hands-on communication support while strengthening internal capacity so that the town consisting clear, consistent, and effective communications over the long term. So Liz's role has been that of the communications coordinator. She's assisted with day-to-day activities such as press releases, media advisories, news stories, and assisting with the town newsletter and strengthening those media relations. She's coordinated messages on some of the major projects in town, like the roadway improvement project that you currently have going on. She also developed the social media performance tracking monthly with reports and, you know, notating trends that align with actionable items that we. notating trends that align with actionable items that we talk about later on, like where we see peaks and where we see valleys in our metrics. We tailored training based on our Phase One findings with the staff for smooth transition to at some point move everything to in-house management. We've conducted the first emergency communications training to build staff confidence and readiness for critical situations. We're currently developing the standardized report template for the annual report, and we're collecting information across the departments. Next slide, please, Liz. I'm going to ask Liz to go into a deeper dive on the metrics for the website, as well as your social media channels.
Hello, everyone. So this is the representation of the website metrics from January through September, so the time that we have been working with the town. We're going to go into kind of a breakdown of total users, new users, sessions, and views in comparison from 2024. But it's important to note that in 2024, in September, there was a redesign of the Civic Plus website, so some things may not, the metrics that we're seeing, the data that we're seeing, may not be completely, I guess, not accurate, but just, it might be a little skewed compared to the metrics that we, and the data that we've received and recorded since the time that we've started in January. But we can talk to the different trends that we see from the different months, and we can kind of talk to the different things that were going on and why the views, I'm sorry, yeah, the views, the sessions, and the new users and total users may attribute to those different values. So move on. So this is the total users of the website in 2024 and in 2025. You can see the different colors there. Just to be clear, total users essentially is the total number of people who visited your site in the specified date range. So you can see the, the different trends here, where we're seeing consistent kind of steady growth, at least in 2025. Again, I feel like I can't speak too, too much to 2024, as it was, we were not with the town, but just to see the, the different trends here and to see how it were, were growing in our total users.
And Liz, just to add to that for the board, in 2024 was the override in April and May, so we do believe that the trends are much higher because of all of the activity in town related to the override and the election vote.
Yes, that's important to note, Kristen. So again, this is the, those, those two kind of months there, April and May, are elevated. The data there is, there are definitely a lot more new users there, so. But again, in 2025, I can speak to the fact that in January, we had, you know, probably the lower, lowest amount of new users, and then as we move on throughout the year, it's steadily growing, and it's, it's consistent growth. And so new users, again, sorry, to go back to that, new users is anytime anyone has never visited the site, someone, someone who's never visited the site is visiting for the first time, so those were new users. These are sessions, and sessions are measured essentially of how long a user is on the website for. On, you know, clicking page to page, it's how long in total that they've been on the website. So this is what that measures. And again, it's consistent, steady growth of, you know, how long people are visiting the site. In May of this year, obviously, I, I looked back to everything that was going on, and we had the, the town election, so I think that that contributed to, you know, a lot more people spending more time, looking at the results and all of the stuff that goes along with the election.
Yeah, I feel like through this data, you'll see a parallel with the month of May for every year consistently, where it falls within your election year, that those metrics are going to be higher. It's people searching for, you know, whatever they're voting on, what you're asking them for election-wise.
And then also page views is essentially, it's, it's the number of pages that your users saw, and in repeated views of the same page are still counted. So just to measure that in that way. Again, it's consistent across the board, and it remains a steady growth. And so these two months here seem to be, these three months seem to be along the same kind of numbers. That's, so that's basically the comparison between the metrics from last year and this year. So these are the metrics from September of 2024, and you'll see the monthly traffic, so monthly page views, so 70,000 page views, and the monthly users, 20,000 monthly total users. And the top 10 most visited pages, homepage, search page, Westford Recycling Commission always, is always like number three on the list, the police activity log, bills, job pages, police department, and it seems as if maybe there is, I don't know if there is some kind of tuberculosis outreach or something going on at that time, but that was one of the top pages in 2024 in September. And if you look to, I'm going to click on the next slide, in 2025, it's comparable, it's about 68, almost 70,000 there, 69,000 there, and 21,000 monthly total users, so that has gone up. And in the 10 top most visited pages with most, most monthly views, they're about the same pages. So we see where people are going.
Just to touch on the point, you did have a redesign in September 2024. Having been, having been a webmaster and having been through multiple website redesigns, redesigns also involve new code, new analytics setups, which, you know, equal new tagging managers, change of pages, URLs, or alternate, altered, altered trigger events, sorry, that's what I was trying to think of. As a result, data tracking continuity can break, meaning historical comparisons might not be apples to apples. For example, a button you clicked on previously logged an event may now be a different label or ID, causing an apparent drop or spikes in engagement metrics.
Yes, and also to Nicole's point, for our metrics that we're able to measure with Civic Plus, we, we don't have, we have more of a limited access to the, to the metrics that we're able to get. And so we're going to look at the news flash metrics of this year, so January through September. And essentially, more detailed insights are just, they're unavailable on Civic Plus' end. We're able to see total views of however many news flashes have been sent out, but it's hard to, it's, it's not an easy, it's not really simple, it's, it's really adding a lot of things up, and it's, and we don't know where the information is always coming from, so that's something we're working on with Civic Plus to get more in-depth insights. But you can see here in January, it's about 8,454, and then it subtly grew again, like Nicole said, in, in April, May, March, you know, those are the higher months there. We did have a kind of a dip in June, July, and we would contribute, attribute that to seasonal drop-off. People aren't usually plugged in in the summer months, you know, and there's less being put out there, because people are on vacation, and that's typically what we would attribute the kind of summer months, the summer lull. In August, we did have a lot of news going out, which I will get to when we go through the in-depth kind of comparison between 2024 and 2025 social media metrics, and we can get more into that about specifics. But we also did have an issue, Civic Plus did have an issue in late August and in September, where they were having issues with subscribers on their Civic Plus site. So some of the subscribers on our Civic Plus site, also with the redesign, may, you know, may have been unsubscribed, and we also know that the IT had told us that there were some issues on Civic Plus then, so we're not sure if that might have contributed to this kind of dip here, but we're, we're thinking that that definitely played a part, of people saying that they weren't receiving news flashes and notifications to their email inboxes and things like that. So, so it's something that we're obviously still working on with Civic Plus to get more in-depth insights. And to that point, we, we did create a short video to learn how to subscribe to town news in just 60 seconds. We thought it would be great for the town to really, to get the word out there, to have more people sign up for town news, and you can, you know, anyone watching at home can subscribe, just scan the QR code, and if you do need to watch a little tutorial, short little tutorial, a minute long, about how to do it and how to subscribe to the different boards, departments, main news flash pages, any kind of news coming out, or the public, public safety, public health. It's super easy to do, and we made, made a little video to just, just to encourage people to sign up. I'm going to jump into Facebook metrics. This is from 2024. Just to note that the views and reach were not provided or not available on Facebook. They were not measured until about October 2024, so we will have those for 2025, but we do not have those for, for measuring in 2024. But you can just see here, we're going to go again, in-depth kind of comparison, and I'll keep it relatively short, but the, you can just see here, the content interaction in January was about 383, getting to the highest of about 524 content interactions in March. And you can see that the highest here for, for link clicks is 2,781 in April, I'm sorry, May, and then in, for visits, the highest range is about 7,600 in May. So you can see those higher metrics right there, and we're going to move on to just show you the metrics from 2025. And you can see it's gone up substantially, but we've kind of really got a really growing here, this, the presence that we have on Facebook and our followers and our audience, and they seem to really resonate with, with the information that we're putting out. Facebook continues to serve as Westford's leading communication channel. It drives the highest visibility and engagement of any platform that we have, and the consistent upward trend in both reach and interaction is, is basically showing how our, the media strategy is really, again, connecting with residents and amplifying our community updates.
And it's that work with the algorithm that they're doing, the consistency of the posting, the branding, and getting it really on, in front of people on their own social media feeds.
Exactly, and it, not only are we, when we put out posts, we are, we are taking in, we're gaining these kinds of insights as to, you know, what is resonating, what do people want to see, what are they interacting with? Do they like, you know, calls to action? Do they like questions, things like that, where we can kind of, you know, really tailor the post to be specific for, of course, each different platform, but also for each different audience. So you can see here for content interactions, 24 is in red and 25 is in pink, and you can just see the growth that our Facebook metrics are telling us, the, the data is telling us, that people are interacting a lot with liking our posts, commenting on our posts, and just in general, just sharing our posts. People are just really resonating with the content that we're putting out. So in March, we had...
Liz, can I just, I just want to interrupt for, so this is just for Town of Westford Facebook page, so we are not showing the metrics for the police department page, or the recreation page, or anything like that, so I just want to be clear for the board, so.
Don't forget DPWs.
Or DP, yeah, exactly. So this is specifically Town of Westford, I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. So in March, we did, it did spike a little bit in March, because we did have, unfortunately had a missing person, but that definitely raised the engagement and visibility, so the content interactions were, were higher here. Of course, we also had annual town meeting, and we did do a campaign on that, so the posting was high, and it seems that there were, there were several different, there was a lot of content interactions in March specifically. And then again, in August, we did have, just to touch on a few things, we did have, that was probably one of their, one of our best performing social media months in Westford. We did have the new treasure collector Hannah hired, and that created a lot of engagement and a lot of visibility into other different audiences, really kind of showcasing like who, who our employees are, and, you know, someone says, oh my gosh, I know her from, from Groton, or whatever, and, you know, it sparks to share it with some other person and be like, oh, hey, you know, and it also just makes the town, you know, these are the types of people that we hire, and, you know, the kind of achievements and accomplishments that really boost engagement from our, our audiences. So we also had, in August, we had the, you know, we had the West Nile Virus Public Health Alert, we had a, we posted a photo at the Middlesex 4-H County Fair, and that was a kind of a behind-the-scenes, like, you know, showing our, our employees, our staff being involved in a community event. So that had a lot of, a lot of engagement. As well as in September was another standout month for our Facebook metrics. We had a lot of employment opportunities posted, we had our annual employee cookout, Westford's birthday that we posted, organic posts with photos. Those are the types of posts that we encourage the most, because, again, they're, you're, you're relating to your audience, and people see you working and having your staff, and, you know, this is what we did today, behind-the-scenes kinds of, kinds of experiences, that's what really gets the engagement from the social media platform, different social media platforms, specifically Facebook. So September was a, really a standout month for our Facebook metrics.
Those organic posts too, build trust through transparency, it's showing your employees actually out there in the field doing the work, or you're celebrating an employee for a milestone date, that attracts other employees to want to come work for Westford. We've had a lot of success in a lot, number of communities by using social media to highlight employees, to really get them candidates for positions. We know how competitive it is.
So this is the, these are the click, link clicks that we had in 2024 and 2025. Again, March, a lot of links were being posted for annual town meeting. April was, was rising. I think May, and I think like Kristen had said, right, this is when the override was from last year, so I think that is why those metrics are, are, are very high from, from May of last year. And then June, we had a heat wave, we had a lot of construction updates and detours for the Littleton Road construction and paving, so, so that could be, you know, attributed to why these metrics are higher. In August, again, the same kind of posts that I mentioned before, those kind of community posts, the new employment opportunities, public safety, public health alerts. And then in September, you can see, so this, this is when, so it seems like September of 2024 was a lot lower. Again, I can't really speak to that, but again, overall, consistent and steady growth from our Facebook metrics. This is the last one, I promise, of, at least of these graphs. And then for visits, again, May seems to be, you know, a lot of people were, were visiting the, your Facebook page for, I assume, for a lot of the different override topics and different issues with that, and people were learning, trying to just, you know, visit because of those reasons, but again, steady, consistent growth from our Facebook metrics. Actually, I lied, there is one more, there's the follows one, isn't there? Yeah. But this one's the most impressive one. So in 2024, our metric, our followers, just here, let me see, usually if I hover over it, it works, but I think, so this one is about 36 people followed Facebook in January. And in January of this year, in January of 2025, it was about double that. And then it just consistently grew. And being, I guess, August, we had about 95 followers just in the month of August alone. And then, you know, back down to September is about, you know, kind of leveling out. But all in all, really consistent growth, and we're still, we still are receiving a lot of content interactions, visits, follows. The reach is growing, and the more that we share these posts and have these more organic posts and kind of see what's resonating with our audience, the, you know, the better the metrics and the data will be essentially.
Liz, on the followers, those were new followers, correct?
Yes, those were new followers, yep.
These were in addition to your current followers, new followers per month?
Correct. So LinkedIn, the town did not have a LinkedIn account. I think it had a LinkedIn account, but it was unmanaged. It was created by someone we don't know. So we were not able to get into it and use it at all until about February, when we started the LinkedIn account. So sorry, I'm just going to grab my notes on this. The LinkedIn account actually is doing really well for just beginning. It's one of our, it's one of the stronger platforms that we do have. We have about 260 followers now, and we had just started the account in February. So you can see in February, we had about 3,600, you know, impressions, and then that grew to 4,000 in September. And then each month steadily growing by followers. In August, we did, actually, I'm sorry, in September, we did have a, I think it was a post that we put out about Westford Academy and the history of Westford Academy. And we asked a question to our followers on LinkedIn and said, you know, what year did you graduate? And we had about 17 people respond, just, you know, really wanting to contribute and say, you know, this is my community, and I grew up here, and this was the year that I graduated. And those kinds of posts are really what, that helped with the, not only helped with the engagement and getting our posts more visibility, but it really helps with kind of that relatability and, you know, just kind of boosting the town and putting the town in a good, positioning the town in a nice, in a good way, so to speak. It just essentially, it makes people want to, you know, participate. And those are the kinds of questions that we see a lot of engagement with. So if we continue to kind of see those different trends and what's really resonating with our audience, that's kind of where we're headed, and LinkedIn is doing really well right now.
LinkedIn is a great platform for your professional, your professional development, especially for cities and towns to attract other, to attract not only employers, but people who want to live, work, and play in a community. So they'll look at a community's post, they'll take a look at some of the posts that you're putting out there, and they gather some of the information from hunting on LinkedIn. I know that the group before us, the Discover Westford group, talked about economic development opportunities, and LinkedIn does play a large role in that. So the more that we put out on LinkedIn to heighten awareness about all that Westford has to offer, especially for professionals and businesses, the better.
Yes, we definitely strategize what we post on LinkedIn versus what we post on Facebook. So these are our Constant Contact metrics for, Constant Contact is the platform that we use to send out press releases to the media, and we have our own media list for Westford. And you can see, we don't send out a lot of campaigns, a lot of press releases, but we send them out when they're warranted. Having worked in the news for a number of years, I have a keen sense of what's kind of newsworthy, where we might, you know, get news coverage from something. And we remain, you know, we have a good relationship with the media. We have zero unsubscribes. I actually sent out the most recent email to, that had the press release about the telecommunicator Rebecca Michaels, who was recognized for her 911 CBR life-saving commendation. And I had sent that out to a larger audience, a larger media outlet audience, just to see if we could gauge any kind of traction there. And, you know, it had a 72% open rate and zero unsubscribed, so that's pretty good for sending out a press release and having it be well-received by the media. So those are the kinds of metrics that we're hoping to continue to, the data, and we're hoping to continue to record when we send out these kinds of press releases. Again, we do strategize when we send out press releases because we want to keep that relationship, build that relationship, and make sure that it's strong with the media. So we matched up Westford with a few of the surrounding neighborhoods that are towns that have comparable populations. And we can see that Westford's population is 25,000 here. So we had Facebook, we did this back in June when we last met. And our Facebook followers were 4,300 in June. And now in, I'm sorry, in October, they're 4,616. So it's a steady community engagement and growth within just a few months. And Westford's Facebook followers rank just behind Chelmsford, it's just 5.7, and exceeds Acton and Sudbury, which Acton is, you know, just about 1,000 less than Westford population. And on LinkedIn, again, we started our LinkedIn account in February, and these other LinkedIn accounts have been established. So you can see the difference there, that we already have really positive growth there in just a short time. Our Twitter followers remain strong. Again, Facebook is our most-used platform, it's our most, it's the platform that most people get, will go to for our, in Westford, for social media. With, we had about, we have about, the, Westford has 2,047 followers on Twitter. And so our presence still remains strong and neck and, strong and ahead of Acton and Sudbury, but neck and neck with Chelmsford there. So again, Westford's 260 LinkedIn followers reflect strongly because it has early traction for an account that was launched back in February, and we're quickly closing that gap. So just some highlights, we've already kind of talked about it, but Nicole had mentioned in the beginning, we really, we're striving to really empower Westford's staff and really give everyone, staff members, the tools and the confidence, really, to do their outreach on their own and feel good about it. And also using that branding kit, using the, you know, the appropriate font, style, logos. We provided a suite of different municipal graphics and flyers. And we provided flyers and job postings, job posting graphics. So they have all the tools that they need. They have the social media best practices for how often they're supposed to be posting on social media, how to create the content, having those trainings, and making sure that everything is ADA compliant and accessible for those that have screen readers. So really trying to have this unified kind of front, the way that we present our outreach and our communications across the town and across departments. We provided the crisis communications training. We had about 24 attendees. It was, it was great, it was a lot of fun. And I think it was really, it was really good to build those relationships, not only with me, with, you know, with all the staff members, but also with them with each other and them really building those relationships and working together for a common goal. And they all, the training was well-received, we received a lot of good feedback, and a lot of them had said it was easy for them to apply some of the things that they learned to their roles now. Again, we have the how to subscribe to Town News video. And our plan is to continue to build capacity, to strengthen communication efforts as a whole, and gather feedback from residents and stakeholders through surveys, benchmarking. We do plan to launch a survey to gather communications feedback, just to kind of measure how we're doing and to get those kind of sentiments from people, you know, within the town, the community members of, you know, how are our communications coming across? We're going to support, continue to support the town in establishing and implementing key performance indicators in general, enhancing overall town communications within departments and within the community. On a separate note and in a separate contract, we're also working with the Council on Aging for their rebranding outreach and community identity initiatives. And that, again, is under a separate contact, contract. I'll let Nicole talk to this slide.
Thank you, Liz. That was a lot of information to digest, so I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible. We were asked to provide a, what calendar year, the first half of calendar year 2027 would look like if we were to remain on board with Westford. So we provided a cost estimate, it's roughly about 30, a little over $36,000. That's the continuation of the communications coordinator role. That's continuation of the metrics and the performance analysis, as well as capacity building. And we included the annual report, coordination, and publication. With that, we've also had discussions about switching out the deliberate application that we've been using for social media with Zen City, so that the town could have more robust analytics, especially when it comes to gathering the sentiment of the community, so we can kind of take the communications that we're currently using and the formats that we're using and even more tailor it specifically for Westford audiences.
Great, thanks, Liz and Nicole. Why don't we just start off with reactions or questions from the board? Any thoughts about what we've seen here in terms of content, things that we'd like to see, things we want to understand better? Yeah, Chris?
I don't know if you have this capability, but I'd be interested to know, can you say, for Facebook, which you've identified as our most influential social media platform, are the demographics that we're reaching in Facebook, does that match at all with the demographic, demographics of the community? Or are we just, say, hitting the, you know, 30 to 40 age group and missing out on a whole range of other, you know, people in Westford?
No, you can, go ahead, Liz.
I was just going to say, even if we are, even if we're looking at the demographics from what's recorded from our Facebook, that's not just the Westford community, right? That's probably people from all over. I think, I looked at it the other day, and it was people from New York and, like, Australia and a bunch of different continents. So I don't know that it would be really telling or would provide us a lot of insights as to the specifics of who we're really reaching, at least in Westford, if that's what we're looking to do.
What it gives you is an overall purview of your audience. So your audience may not just be Westford residents. It would be kind of hard to deep dive into that because you're looking, you'd have to look at how Facebook collected that data. I mean, we can definitely look at it, and we can provide you with a report after this evening's meeting on the background and, you know, what communities are visiting the Westford page and, you know, what age demographic is doing that, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one thing, one of our strategic objectives, I'm not going to get the wording exactly right, but the goal is to be the most engaged community of, you know, like us, of our size in the Commonwealth. I think I understand from your presentation, you've got a certain set of focus areas. It looks like we're kind of in the pack, you know, maybe slightly ahead relative to Facebook, LinkedIn, other things. Are there other things that you see other communities doing in their communication strategy that are particularly useful, that you'd recommend we consider doing that we're not doing now?
So I would recommend, you know, if, you know, we're working within a specific budget. So a lot of communities have a centralized person, a PIO, of someone boots on the ground every day, managing the communications immersed in that community. A lot of communities now are backing away from that because of the overhead cost of doing that. We would recommend down the road, you know, if budget allowed, to have an Instagram account. So you're reaching, you know, the demographic on Instagram. I did have an opportunity to speak to some Westford residents most recently, and I asked them how they got their news. And they said, you know, we get it on, we sign up and we look at the Facebook page. And I asked them about the e-subscriber. I think the community surveys would help if we did, sent out a community survey. I think if your budget allowed moving down the road to capture your renters and people moving, thinking about moving, people who've recently moved into the community. Maybe an annual mailer is something that we've seen communities do in multiple languages. That would definitely assist. There's going to be some changes coming up, I think it's in 2027, with how communications go out to-- There's, they're putting, the government's putting some teeth behind, you know, communications and, you know, for Title II and for Title V of the Civil Rights Act to make sure that communications are clear and there's, you know, there's a vetting process for them. So down the road, it's something that we're going to have to work and plan more concisely with. And every community is going to be responsible for it, not just Westford.
So beyond social media and kind of the traditional mailing, the kind of strategies that you're seeing working are pretty similar between communities?
They're very similar to what we're currently employed. We are staying with, we're staying, I'll be honest, we're staying in your arena of what platforms you already have listed because Instagram is more of an organic type of platform. It's the right now kind of, we want to see what's happening, more organic content, more here today. We have seen some communities venture into, you know, TikTok. We've been, I've been hesitant on encouraging communities to go down that path until, you know, we figured out where TikTok was going to land, if it was going to be banned, if it was going to be kept. You know, there's a lot of different platforms that you can go to. My concern is fragmenting your audience as well. If they know that they can go to your homepage, their Facebook page, and then you also have your X account, your LinkedIn account, adding in another layer with Instagram would be helpful down the road. But again, that's a, that's something you have to think about budgetary-wise because that requires a lot of man-hours to work with that algorithm. It's not helpful to have a platform that somebody goes to that's not being updated. We found that when we investigated some of the boards, committees, commissions, even departments, when we were looking at their platforms and we said, you know, it's great that everybody wants to have a Facebook page, but if you're not using it to benefit, using the algorithms at your benefit, then it's just another platform that's sitting there. And somebody's going to go there, it's kind of like your webpage. If you're not actively posting, which Westford is doing, you're posting on your news feed, if you're not actively posting or working those webpages and building those algorithms online, then there's no traffic going back and forth. What we've done is tried to work with the departments to help each other out. So if DPW posts a road closure, have the police department share it on their page and, you know, you know, be advised this is happening, but share it, not take the information and place it on their page, but back and forth sharing builds those algorithms.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully I didn't go into too much--
No, that's great, thanks Nicole. John, do you have a question?
Well, I have a basic question about the, you developed a comprehensive communications plan. I don't think this committee or this board has approved that or reviewed that. And I brought that up at our meeting a week ago, and I think we need to do that because I have some serious concerns about just how that plays out.
John, you were going to get back with me with some of your concerns, and then we were going to talk it through. So I'm happy to do that with you.
Okay. I forgot you were waiting for that.
That's okay, no worries. It's been a long few weeks.
I just have one other question. You know, you had a slide there talking about new users. And you said, and was that month over month? Or how did you calculate that? Or how did you calculate that? Because it went up and down, and I was, and I was searching for the numbers of just how many users we have, and I think you answered that question on that later slide of how many users we really have, but that's, that slide was kind of deceptive or just, I didn't understand it that much.
So we calculated them by month, so each month had a total number of new users and a total number of users. New users, again, are people that have just, have never been to the site before and are just visiting for the first time.
So they were cumulative over that chart, so that's a larger number, much larger number. Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other questions for these folks tonight? I guess like the last thing we saw, when we come back to talk about budgetary trade-offs, we'll primarily be looking for your guidance, Kristin, on kind of how you balance this because it's essentially almost providing like a staff function as an outsourcer, so. Okay. Any other, any questions from the public?
I don't see anything at this time.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, folks, we have to move on. We've got a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, but thank you very much, Liz, and thank you, Nicole.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Next up is our 830, which is special town meeting, and we, let's see, Kristin, what's our?
Sure. So we have Madam Moderator here and a former moderator, actually, as well. So I'm happy to recap again, as we did at the beginning of the meeting, our special town meeting will be Monday, October 27th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at Westford Academy. Check-in starts at 6:00 PM. There are 13 articles on the warrant, and we are continuously updating our town meeting webpage with the supplemental materials to help voters understand each article. This evening, you have seven articles that, to provide a recommendation on you, had already provided a recommendation on several of them at your previous meeting. Also, to recap for the moderator, we have pub transportation for those who may need it to and from, there's a registration on the website, free childcare, again, registration on the website. We do have an accessibility email if people need accessibility. That signup was last week, but we're happy to take anyone who may need additional accessibility. Our internal teams had preparation meetings last week for traffic flow and circulation and check-in and all of that, so we are in really good shape related to all the logistics of the meeting. Am I forgetting anything related to the overall? I always forget one or two things.
Just the League.
The League of Women Voters, which we talked about earlier in this meeting. Again, they'll be having their preview Thursday evening on Zoom at 7:00 PM. Newsflash went up on that today on our homepage, so feel free to register for that if you'd like additional information. Thank you.
Any, any general questions about town meeting before we dive into articles? Okay. Do you want to put up the, basically this special town meeting article is just?
I will put up the orange door. And I also have Dan O'Donnell on line if he could answer.
And in previous meetings, we have addressed some of these things before, so unless there's a question from the board, there's no need to repeat anything that we've already heard. Okay, so we'll get the, we'll get the.
I am putting the motions up. Please know that the zoning motions that Jeff and Joe are here to present on are still being fully vetted by Town Council, but they have been reviewed and approved by, recommended by the planning board. So we'll start with, these are the overall articles, again, 13 articles. You've already provided recommendations on eight through 12, and decided not to provide a recommendation for 13, which is the citizens petition.
Any questions on the first two? We've seen these before. Is anything changed on these, Dan, since we've seen them in previous meetings?
The first three articles, no, nothing's changed on those since they came up earlier.
Any questions?
But we do have one pending change for capital, which we can get to.
Okay. So on the first two, any, any questions from the board on the first two? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recommend.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For Article Two, I'll entertain a motion to recommend. We got a second, I think. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dan, you said there was a change in capital?
Yes, for the, the fields, we did receive bids last week, and they, they were very favorable compared to what we were planning. Kristin, do you have a specific number yet that we're?
So we did have a proposal of $2.1 million. I believe DPW Director Kyle Fox has recommended that we hold 1.15 million dollars. So the bids did come in very favorable last week, so we will be changing that motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, change from what? Because I'm reading something that's a 2.1.
Yep, so 2.1 million was what we had before. We'll be changing that to 1.15 million.
Okay.
So the bids came in.
That's a really significant.
Almost a million dollar loss.
Okay. Can we make that happen over and over again, Kristin?
I will do my magic, or Kyle can do his magic.
That's saving a lot of money. Okay. If the, if the town votes to receive it. Any questions about capital? And I'll note that our finance colleagues approve 412. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moving on to the zoning bylaw amendments, again, the motions are still being completely vetted, but I'll turn this over to Jeff, Morissette, and Joe Genowitz, who have been working closely with the planning board, who closed their public hearing last week on these four articles.
Okay, so we don't have our planning board colleagues' recommendations on these yet.
Actually, we, we do have, it's on the town meeting website section now, the planning board report recommendations.
Okay.
So we do have that. Maybe we just give like 23 second reviews of the amendments.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Jeff.
So the first one, Article Four, if you may recall, in August of 2024, the Affordable Homes Act was signed into law. This effectively created the protected use ADUs or accessory dwelling units. And so as of February 2nd, 2025, ADUs that qualified as protected use ADUs, they must be permitted as of right in our Residence A and Residence B zoning districts. So this amendment just brings our bylaw into consistency with the new state law, and it clarifies we still would have under this a, an option for a local accessory dwelling unit, which would still involve going to the zoning board for a special permit to get permission for that accessory dwelling unit. The protected use does not require a special permit, you cannot require a special permit, it's just as of right, if they meet the requirements and go through the usual permitting like receptics and/or wetlands, it's a building permit. So this would bring us into consistency. I will say, if this bylaw amendment doesn't pass, it really doesn't change anything about the protected use ADUs. It already is allowed as of right under state law, so even if our bylaw isn't consistent, it doesn't trump state law, but this would make it easier for people looking to go through the ADU process. It would create confusion if we were inconsistent with state law, this would just spell things out more clearly. We did have the assistance of NIMCOG through technical assistance, so our regional planning agency helped us with this. And the planning board, as you mentioned, they did hold their public hearing, they closed it recently, and they voted unanimously five to zero to recommend, and the Zoning Board of Appeals also voted five zero to recommend. And if you have any questions, one of the big differences between, to qualify for a protected use ADU, it can only be so big, so it can't, it has to be the lesser of either 900 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling unit, right? So that's one of the biggest things. So if an ADU doesn't fit neatly into that, it doesn't qualify for protected use ADU, it could potentially still be eligible for a local accessory dwelling unit, special permit process.
Thanks.
I was able to pull up the document that Jeff provided me right before this meeting that does have those recommendations. I apologize, I have the wrong document.
No, no problem, it's very helpful. Any questions for Jeff about this article, Article Four? Okay. There being none, I'll entertain a motion to recommend.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
All right, so we get into Article Five. This is essentially looking to take some items that are right now given a no and making them as a maybe. It would allow for potential applicants with situations kind of highlighted throughout the warrant there to seek a special permit with whoever the special permit branding authority is in that, within that existing use category, whether it's the zoning board or the planning board. And the example we like to give on here is to say like, why would we do this? Based on, you know, recent inquiries or applications that we received, we had a business moving in from a neighboring community, they had three, three employees right now, and right now in our zoning bylaw, we break down light manufacturing to four employees or less or five or more. But within the next year, they were looking to increase the number of employees from three up to about six. So rather than having a situation where maybe they're allowed use right now in a zoning district, and then within a year, all of a sudden, they're not allowed, and are we supposed to bring zoning enforcement against them? That seems kind of silly, so why not allow a special permit process where we know this business is intending to move and expand in town, make the permitting process far more straightforward for them? So it would allow for additional options for property owners to be able to redevelop their property, could encourage more economic development, and help us not have as many missed opportunities where people might go to the table now, see it's a no, not even bother asking staff about the situation like we just described. So we're looking to capitalize on those opportunities with this zoning bylaw amendment.
Any questions for Joe about this one? I'll note that our planning board colleagues vote to recommend five zero.
Economic development, eight zero zero, and zoning board of appeals, five zero zero.
If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to recommend.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Who's up for six?
Oh, Vinnie.
Okay.
So this article proposes to amend our multifamily, MBT communities, multifamily overlay district. So in short, this proposal, it would only affect some properties in Tech Park East. It proposes to remove two parcels from the existing overlay district and add one parcel. So specifically, it would remove number two and number six from Tech Park East, and it would add number five to Tech Park East. And so this would result in a very small net decrease of 1.66 acres from the overlay district. This is for the Gutierrez Company, this is at their request, and the planning board agreed to sponsor it. Their specific proposal would be to construct two buildings where there's an existing building now, would be a total of 80 units, so 40 in each building. It would be condominium, so it would be homeownership form. It would not be age restricted, but it would be age targeted to persons 55 and older. And what does that mean? That means they sort of gear the amenities, they lay out things that would lend themselves to folks who are either looking to downsize, you know, have single level living, and have the kinds of amenities that might match to what they're looking for, that would minimize the need for, you know, higher condo fees by picking, you know, I'd say more frugal amenities that gear themselves to that anticipated class. They've done this in other communities, but we'll say it doesn't require that they be age restricted, there will always be, you know, young folks, children even, but that would not be the typical. Part of their proposal would also be to include either a group pub or a restaurant, which we think would be a nice mix to add here. And the planning board did hold their public hearing on this, they closed it, they voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend, the Zoning Board of Appeals also voted five zero to recommend, and the Economic Development Committee voted nine zero zero to recommend this article to town meeting.
This proposal also has the benefit of continuing some anchor tenants in their current location where they're hoping to grow, so it's, it's basically a straight swap that keeps some of the strong tenants and, you know, it's almost exactly the same area. Any, any questions for, for Jeff about this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to recommend.
So move. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last of the boarding zoning articles.
No, no. No.
Helping build.
Article seven is tiered site plan review. So as we mentioned earlier with the economic development proposal, we work with them looking for opportunities to streamline permitting where we can, and try to match the level of review with the size of the proposal, I guess is the best way to think about it. So we worked with NIMCOG to create language to create a three-tiered process as opposed to the single process that we have right now, where every single proposal would require a public hearing process. So creating the three-tiered system would position us well, particularly for a small to mid-size business opportunities, and give us a competitive advantage over communities that still have that single level. It would help reduce, you know, time and expense to permit for those, for those small businesses that otherwise are not having much of anything going on in the property. An example could be Western Valley Marketplace, a simple tenant fit-up where existing use has one parking requirement, the proposed use maybe has a lesser extent, and it doesn't seem to make sense to have them go through a full public hearing process where there's legal notices and public notifications within, maybe within 300 feet for a simple change of use like that. So creating this type of system will allow businesses to be able to move in and fill that vacant space more quickly, so it would provide greater efficiency to applicants, to businesses, and for staff and the board to not have to go through all the requirements for a public hearing process. So that's what this is for.
Great. Any questions for Joe about this one? Looks like our colleagues have approved this one as well.
Yep.
At the planning board. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Not approve, to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Joe. We are now at our 845 item, old new business. First time is request to appoint Ming Zhang to the 300th Anniversary Committee to a full membership seat for a term, oh, thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. I just want to point out, that was exactly eight minutes, two minutes for the chart.
Well done.
Just port your effect.
Well done, Jeff. I appreciate it. Okay, request to appoint Ming Zhang to the 300th Anniversary Committee to a full membership seat for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Any questions or comments about this?
And this does not have a memo because we are still forming this committee, so this was the next VAS that came in. You still have seats open, so we did not ask that committee to review them, I didn't know that was prudent, so I wanted to just bring this before the board for an appointment.
How many seats are open?
I believe there's three more seats open.
So six spots filled? Is that right?
There's five spots filled. I think it's, can't remember if it's seven or nine. I don't have that number in front of me.
All right, thank you.
Great. If there are any other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ming Zhang.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
How do you got that in the minutes?
I get to choose.
Right, the power. Next up, recommendation from the Communications Advisory Committee to appoint Technology Director Nate Gilmet for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Any questions on that?
Did Nate offer an opinion on this?
This is a Mike Wells replacement, so Mike Wells was on this committee.
I don't know.
He was advised of this before he took the job.
Okay. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee to sign the proclamation in recognition of Italian-American Heritage Month.
So I do have Anjali and Wendy on, if you'd like to hear from them, if you'd like to just move forward, it's up to you. How would we like to?
I think we've seen this before. Didn't we do, didn't we have this last year as well? Not that it matters. Any, any, any questions about the proclamation?
No.
No.
I think it's straightforward.
Okay. Okay. There being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, to sign the proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Next up, board reports and updates, update on the board and committee calendar.
Sure. So based upon feedback that we received in writing and some updates that are occurring this month and next month, we have populated the board and committee appointment calendar a little bit further. It's still not fully vetted, taking into account where there's certain boards or committees who will likely have an update for us within the next four to six months based upon their work. Some board or committees that have not given us an update for a long period of time. Obviously, this evening, you heard from the Economic Development Committee, so again, just still looking for, for feedback from the board on when you may want to see these kinds of questions.
Yeah, I'd like to see a permanent town building committee within the next three months, with an update on the library.
Yeah, makes sense.
Because the schedule we have on the website is a year old, as is the budget, and because it is a result of the bids, I think there would be some changes in the budget, or meaning some kind of allocation or some way of what we hold in reserve, that kind of thing. So I think we could use that.
Yeah, I agree, it's a good time for an update. I guess, Kristin, are there any other items like the two we saw tonight that have a budget decision? I mean, all, everything has budget decision.
Everything's a budget decision. I think the ones that you heard this evening were the pressing budget decisions from committees that we've seen.
Okay.
I've gone through all of them. I've gone through all of the department's budgets with them, with the exception of the schools, I'm meeting with them on Thursday of this week, so any other budget ties that come from a department or committee, I believe that it's level.
Okay. Because it certainly makes sense to prioritize those in the front, but if we feel like we've tackled those, in addition, permanent town building committee, I guess I'll just paste them to what works in the agendas that we have.
And the calendar in your packet may have been updated Friday afternoon as well, so I will have Pam send out the revised calendar tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. As always, if you have any opinions about which committee updates you'd like to see first, just let me and Kristin know, and we can reorder them.
Great.
Okay, next up is the town manager's report.
Sure. So we have, first up, to review and act to sign an administrative consent order issued for the Westford Academy wastewater treatment facility. As I presented to you in an email about a month ago, the town of Westford was written consent order by the Department of Environmental Protection. We've had the Westford Academy wastewater treatment facility for many, many years. It is very closely proximate to the country well, country road well, so there are higher standards for this treatment plant than there are for other treatment plants that may be further away from wells. We currently have a contract with a firm who manages all of our wastewater treatment facilities, so four of them. This one in particular has caused problems related to meeting certain standards. Mark Warren is on the line if you do have particular questions about that. So the DEP has issued this administrative consent order requiring us to do a certain engineering study by December of this year that is in the town meeting article number two for additional appropriations. We don't feel as prudent to take it out of their current budget because their current budget covers the operations that they do currently. We do feel that coming out of this order, we are likely going to have a large capital plan for us, require either significant upgrades or some other improvements to the treatment facility. But, so we've had town council review this consent order, they were at the meeting with DEP with us, we offered some suggestions, DEP took some of those suggestions, so it does require a signature by the select board to move forward and enter into that. Mark, I believe we've had consent orders on this project in the past, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So this is not new, but we know we need to add added focus to this treatment plant for future compliance.
Any questions for Kristin? This has unfortunately been a recurring item for us.
Yeah, something we've got to do.
Yep.
I had a question for Mark. Has there been any kind of indication of just what's causing this periodic violation?
Oh, that's a, that's a complicated question. It really has a lot to do with plant chemistry, and really, the driving factor is the proximity to the country road well. The permit is so tight that it's difficult to meet different parameters at the same time. But without going into the actual chemistry, I think a lot of it has to do with dissolved oxygen, but it's really, it's just a difficult and somewhat complex issue to solve. And I really think the permit is the driver in this case.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Mark? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the signing of the administrative consent order.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, back to you.
Sure. So the next one is to review and act to approve updated permit request forms for the town common, banners, sandwich boards, street closures, and special licenses. So Pam McNiff in the town manager's office manages this process related to these applications, and intakes the information and interfaces with the people who are organizations who are applying for these permits or requests, and she's taken upon herself to make sure that these forms are all uniform now, that they meet current requirements and standards, and just have a better and easier feel for those applicants, as well as all of these, or many of these requests also go to public safety for their review and approval, so there's a continuity with these applications that come in. I do know that you received a public comment related to these forms. We've reviewed them, we feel that everything is in order, but happy to discuss that further.
So I apologize if this has already happened, but so I think two of the comments we had suggest an amendment to the form. Did we make an amendment?
No, we have not made an amendment to the form.
Okay. Should we make an amendment to the form if the, if the wheelchair lift is not acceptable, not accessible for people? And there was another one too about the trash barrels not being there. Do we want to update the language so it reflects?
We can double check them, let me just pull up.
I thought the permits require them to, what they bring in, they carry out.
Correct, yes.
And I guess there was a problem with the barrels before, people were misusing them.
Yeah, I guess my general thought is if there's like a language cleanup just to reflect the current reality on the ground, then we'd want to approve these as amended or with guidance to make those edits.
I apologize, I'm trying to pull up that email, I don't have it in front of me.
I think there were three items. One was sort of coordination between different parties that are on the common. We talked about that earlier today, and I think the general feeling was that occasions where you have that kind of crossover problem, like there are two major events running at once, are relatively rare, and, but there were two sort of language issues. One was sort of access to the lift, how one would use the lift, and the lift is basically not operable and hasn't been in a while.
Right.
And the other was.
The other was, we do have a carry-in, carry-out policy, there's no trash receptacles on the common.
Okay, and that's what the document says.
Right, we'll take out that reference if it's still in there.
Okay. So I guess I would propose we do that with the two, with edits to reflect what's going on the ground. Any other comments on that?
Is there any consideration of taking another look at that chairlift? Do we need to do something about that? That chairlift?
Um.
I mean, it's inoperable. Do we need to do something with that?
I think the choice is we either leave it off limits inoperable, or we, someone else may know more about the history of the chairlift and what would be required to actually make it fully compatible. So why don't we recognize, why don't we recognize that one?
I'm Ellen Hardy, I'm the Common Restoration Project Coordinator. As terms of the current status of the lift, our committee was not involved in that decision to just take it offline. We'd spent 18 years before that, keeping it operative, getting it inspected, so we'd done everything we could to make it work. That all happened through the town manager's office, and I can't help you with that history, you'd have to go back to your records and the select board. I could do that research for you and bring it back to you, but I don't have that tonight because we weren't involved. I did want to just address the point you made about my first email point.
Yeah.
About coordination between the church, the library, the Roden Bush, the PCA. It's not clear to the people who are applying for the use of the common why that's on there. And they check and say, of course, we've talked to all those people, but they really haven't. And even though it's only a few times a year, Tom, it does make a difference. If it turns out there's a big church event going on, the library book sale, the Roden Bush is having a party, and the PCA is having a big event, perhaps that's not the best date to have another event on the common. And you don't know that because in the application, the applicants haven't understood why they've been asked that. It's supposed to be, call the church, find out what's happening on that day, and it just doesn't happen. Perhaps it's a solution waiting, or what is it, problem waiting for solution, as Paul Bear used to say at town meeting, of a solution looking for the problem. If it hasn't been a problem in the 20 years that the bandstand and the common have been more popular, then just leave it in there. But I just wanted you to understand the rationale about why I brought that up, because it makes no difference if that line is in there, because nobody pays attention to it. If that's not a problem, just let it stay there and be aware of the fact that that's the situation.
Okay.
And it can just let lie.
Great.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess, any comments or discussion? I guess my sense is that, I think the concern was, if we actually began to enforce this communication, it might become pretty burdensome for people who are applying for relatively routine use to do the outreach, and partly, part of the reason it hasn't happened, I think, is people don't actually know how to do it, and there's steps to it. So we briefly thought about, well, do we create some kind of central repository, and then we thought, well, let's just make sure that this is a big enough problem to put that level of effort behind. And so I think the current sense is, these kind of intersections haven't happened often enough that we should up the requirements to actually enforce this cross-communication or create some separate new mode of making that simpler for people.
So perhaps it just should be amended, or you just not even pretend like it's going to happen, and just take that whole line out.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a suggestion.
Or add the phone number so they know how to get ahold of them.
Okay. So I guess I would propose that we proceed, right now anyway, the lift is inoperable, so at least for the purposes of updating this form, releasing it, there's nothing to decide. We could decide to look into what it would take to make that ADA complateable and actually work as designed, but I don't think we need to decide that before approving the form.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
Okay. So with guidance to update the language and to reflect the comments.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the updated permit request forms.
So the suggested changes that we're making here, are we striking this requirement for people to reach out to?
So it says, have you checked? It doesn't say you are required to check, so it's kind of an advisory, so I'll take how the board would like to.
I guess I see it as sort of like a reminder for something, something should be thinking about.
If they say yes, then they, they're.
I don't have a strong position on it. If the board would like that to come out, that's fine.
I would call it, I don't think at this point it's reasonable to have.
It's only there really, I mean, functionally, it's just a reminder to people to be thinking about it, but.
I'd leave it in.
I'd leave it in too, just as a reminder, they might not even think, you can go back to the other things.
Yeah, so I guess I would propose that we, that it basically stays as it is, we understand its limitations, we understand that we're not seeing, that it's often not acting as more than a reminder or prompt, and that we, if the lift is truly inaccessible and not usable, that we remove any suggestion that it can be made so.
Yeah.
And that we remove the trash barrel reference because we don't have trash barrels.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There is a hand raised. So Wendy, you had a question.
Hold on one second. I was just going to confirm that for me, when I'm filling out one of these forms, I do do a double check, and I do appreciate that it's on the form to me as a reminder for my own checklist as I have a lot of things going on. I do find it useful, because I do, I do check with the church, library, PAC, and the museum from Roden Bush.
Good, thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
We appreciate the comment. Okay. If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the updated permit request.
Sager.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You got.
All right, so next is request to approve the issuance of a loan from the Mass Clean Water Trust and sign-related interim loan note closing documents. I would like to introduce Hannah Moller, she is our new treasure collector, and she has stuck with us until almost 9:30 this evening. She actually just went through this process with the town of Groton, and is walking us through this, is related to our PFOS treatment plants and getting the loan for that information. So Hannah, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, first off, nice to meet everyone in the evening. Yeah, we just went through this process in Groton, it's definitely a unique type of borrowing, it's not something we had ever done before. It's sort of similar to the MSBA process that we go through for the schools, however, we don't receive the funds upfront. So this interim loan is basically approving the $15 million that we are going to apply for reimbursement for as the project is being done. So I don't know if Mark is still on.
He is still on, yes.
But Mark has already submitted for some of these funds to be reimbursed for this project, which kind of triggered us to follow through with making sure that we had all of our ducks in a row. So I have all of the paperwork prepared by our bond counsel, and as we go along, they will complete portions of this project, submit for reimbursement per all of these very stringent rules, and it will go through the Mass Water Pollution Trust, they will approve everything that has been submitted, and then they will reimburse us for what we have already spent. This is unique, typically, we have the funds in hand, and then we'll kind of come to the end of the project, get everything borrowed out, and then we will borrow it permanently. This is a little backwards to how anything else works, so I just want to make sure that we're all set and ready to go. And we have, I think, five documents here, it's actually only three documents, there are two copies of, two of those documents in there that need to be signed. I flagged everything for you in blue, dark blue is for select board signature, there is one document that needs to be signed specifically by the clerk of the board, and then everything else should be all set for me to bring downstairs to Lori tomorrow to have it signed and sealed and sent out.
So we will need a vote on that for signature.
Any questions on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of the loan from Mass Clean Energy, Clean Water Trust.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So please make sure you sign before you leave this evening. Next, moving on to our grants, purchase orders, and contracts. The first is a grant from TJX Companies for the purchase of a drone to assist in missing person searches, accident reconstruction, and criminal investigations in the amount of $5,000 as requested by the police department. Moving on to purchase orders, wave guide for the transfer of town-owned fiber optic cables as part of the Boston Road Reconstruction Project in the amount of $20,165.63 as requested by the Engineering Department. Lexipol for, as a policy management system in the amount of $11,591.73 as requested by the Fire Department. And Colonial Municipal Group for the purchase of a Chevrolet Silverado 2500 four-by-four utility truck with snowplow in the amount of $86,788.80 by the Water Department. I'll just pause to see if there's any questions. Move on to contracts. UTS of Massachusetts for window and roof testing for the library building project in the amount of $24,890, excuse me, $24,890 as requested by.
I have a question on that.
Sure. Do you want me to go forward, Tom?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll ask this question.
Why isn't that included in the budget?
It is included in the budget, but it's a separate contract.
Okay, this is just approval of a contract, but it's within the budget.
Yes, it is.
All right, thanks.
The next is for UTEC Incorporated for curbside collection of mattresses at no cost of the town. It's a memorandum of agreement slash contract as requested by the town manager's office. We're trying to come up with creative solutions for people to get rid of their waste. And the next is for PAR Corporation for Professional Engineering Services for the Westford Academy Wastewater Treatment Facility in the amount of $15,000 as requested by the Water Department. We discussed that under the consent order earlier this evening. Next is Woodward and Curran for service contract for the supervisory data acquisition in the amount of $10,000 as requested by the Water Department. And last but not least, Natural Systems Utilities for Professional Wastewater Treatment Facilities Contract Operations Services in the amount of $125,278.65 as requested by the Water Department.
Any questions on these?
I have a question on the last one, too. So why, why are we extending this for seven months? Like, I don't understand, it doesn't seem, is that like a normal process that we follow for this network?
Mark, could you answer that question, please?
Sure. So the current contract runs out on November 31 of this year. We've decided it's probably a good idea to extend the current contract so we can, we can bridge that gap and get to the start of fiscal year 2027. And NSU, the current contractor, has agreed to, has agreed to this, and they're going to keep their costs stable.
So going forward, it'll be synced up with the town budget cycle?
Correct, so yes, the, and it's been difficult in the past to, you know, to budget, so right now, the contract operations contract. So right now, the, the contract operations contract sort of straddles the town's fiscal year. This will get it in line with the town's fiscal year.
So this, this is the company that is currently managing the Westford Academy Wastewater Treatment Facility?
That is correct.
And our other treatment facilities as well.
So I guess my concern is we've had, how long have they been working with us in terms of handling this, these facilities?
This will be their sixth year.
And so we have this history of problems with the Westford Academy Wastewater Treatment Facility, you know, Mark. Is there anything here that, is this company not able to keep these facilities working correctly?
No.
Or to your point earlier, this is just a very specific issue with this particular treatment facility?
Yeah, the, the latter. It's a, it's specific to this particular plant. These, these issues with the plant have, you know, they, they started well before, you know, NSU became the contract. They basically predate NSU as contract operator. I, I don't see it as a contract operations issue. I, I see it more of, you know, something greater than that. Possible, possibly a, a technology change or, or expansion of the current technologies or additional storage, you know, for the untreated wastewater. I, I don't see this as an actual operations issue.
Okay.
In fact, they've, they've been working very closely with us over the, the past several months to get this plant, you know, back in shape.
And just to clarify, at town meeting, we will be asking for a 10-year contract for wastewater treatment services. We feel that that would be more advantageous. Mark, please remind me if we're still out to bid or if we're, we received the bids yet?
We have received bids.
We have received bids, so we're working through it.
We're in the process of review right now.
Thank you.
Mark? Any other questions on grants, purchase orders, contracts? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One thing we kind of skipped past before is just related to the, to the wheelchair lift. Is there interest in having Kristin look into the history about why we've, the collective decision at the time was, we're not going to fix it, we're just going to leave it?
My recollection was that that thing was, has been a pain to keep operational, and there wasn't a lot of demand for it.
I'm not sure it meets any standard. That's the thing. It's.
Yeah.
And just wasn't worth the money, I think. That was, that was what I got from, when Joey would speak about it at Capital, but it came up.
If there is some who knows, I can just tell you.
Yeah, let me see if we can just do some easy digging, just to get an answer, but.
I also sort of partly remember that in order to make it fully compliant and turn it into a much, much bigger project, which we didn't feel like we wanted to take on. But I don't know that for sure, so. Okay.
I'll take it as a lower priority. That's okay.